Occasionally go in a store and such without it.
I have a hard time wearing mine. I wear it around on my mouth, but not on my nose because I can't breathe.
Apparently even on a Zoom meeting, you have to shut your phone down. Heard it from the living room.
And we have a lot of resolutions tonight.
Sandy, you got to get some jokes for us while we sit here waiting.
I am terrible with jokes, Art. I can get one told to me and then I forget it instantly. I am going to go ahead and call a regular city council meeting to order at 7:15. We've already done the flag salute and I think we have some, Tori, that's here tonight. Hi, Tori. Other than that, I think that's the only person we have knew. So let's move to the approval of the minutes. The first approval of the minutes would be May 5, 2020, the regular meeting. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Move to approve.
Have a second? It's been moved by Art and seconded by Junior to approve the May 5, 2020, regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, six and one absent. Next is the approval of the May 12, 2020 budget meeting. It's been moved by Junior and seconded by Art to approve the May 12, 2020 budget meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, six and one absent. Next is the minutes for May 26, 2020, for the budget meeting. Motion please. Okay, it's been moved by Brandon and seconded by Art to approve the May 26, 2020 budget meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, six and one absent. Next is the June 2, 2020, emergency meeting. Minutes. I need a motion. It's been moved by Junior and seconded by Art to approve the June 2, 2020, emergency meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Right, motion passes, six and one absent. Next, we're going to close the city council meeting and go into the public hearing. And the purpose of this public hearing is to get public comments on the budget for 2020 and for public comments on the state revenue share use. So the first is, I'm calling for abstention from council. Do I have any? Say none, move on. Do I have any objections to the jurisdiction? And what about staff report? Marta, did you want to add anything?
This is the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget went before the budget committee on May 12 and received budget committee approval on May 26, 2020. And I request the council's approval and adoption of this year budget 2020 to 2021.
Thank you. Next is the proponents. Do I have any proponents? In your hearing, none. Opponents? Do I have any cross-examination of opponents? What about public agencies? Alright, so do we have new rebuttal evidence? Okay, so that closes the public hearing and we'll move into deliberation by the council. Sorry for the dog in the background. Let's move to the financial report ending May 31, 2020.
Alright, in our financial report for May, we had the one big purchase, which was our crane truck. And just in time, it was purchased just in time because it has come really handy for seeing them during the storm. But that was our biggest purchase, single item purchase that we had in the month of May. The only other extraordinary thing was sanitary disposal was having staffing shortages and so they hadn't been sending out their invoices because they were down to literally one person in the office. So we did pay out two months' worth in May. But other than that, everything's just operational. Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Marta? No? Say none, and I need a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Have a second? It's been moved by Brandon and seconded by Katie to approve the financial report ending May 31, 2020. Any questions? If not, could I roll call, please? David?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Sandy? Yes. Motion passes, six and one absent. We don't have any pre-arranged presentations. Do we have any public comments? Tori, did you have a chamber report?
I do. So, I'm getting it up here. And this Thursday, we have a Facebook Live event for this 2020 census. We are, you can access that through our Facebook page like before. And that will be starting at 6:00 PM. It's a partnership with the Hepner Chamber in Morro County. If you have any questions about it, you can ask them during the event in the comments. We are going to be discussing where the funding goes for, the importance of it. Just kind of pretty much running it down to the importance of filling out your census 2020. And we will also be having, Carla Jimenez will be there translating it in Spanish, so it will be in Spanish also. And we'll reach, sharing that across all the areas that we can within our groups and community groups and pages. On Wednesday, we are going to have our, next Wednesday, the 17th, we're going to have a virtual chamber luncheon. This is going to be a live event again, you can find on our Facebook page. We'll be doing the community events and what's happening in the chamber and updating everybody what's going on in our community. The Fourth of July celebration is going to be just a fireworks show at the Boardman Marina this year. Some of that funding that covers the fireworks came from McCurd and our sponsors. There will be not, there will not be any other events at the Boardman Marina. So we're asking people not to go down to the marina to do with follow guidelines of social distancing and allow for just safety of everybody. And we have increased the duration of the fireworks by 10 to 15 minutes. And they're going to be higher velocity, so they'll go higher. We won't have any of the short ones that you can usually only see in the marina. So you'll be able to see them from your home or anywhere out in the community to follow guidelines that are set forth. And July 6, we'll be reevaluating what we're going to be doing at the Sage Center in the Chamber Office and deciding when we're going to open our doors to the public. And our July luncheon, we're hoping to have that in person, hopefully. And figure out a way, maybe we can have a Zoom option for those who are unable to attend, who either don't feel comfortable or just can't attend in person. So that's where we're at. Any questions for me?
I do, Tori. How are you going to, is there going to be some kind of traffic control down at the marina? For the fireworks, or is it going to be completely closed off so we don't have a crowd issue?
That is what we're trying to do when we kind of promote our fireworks, is stating that we're asking people to not congregate at the Boardman Marina. But with not having any events or vendors or activities happening at the Boardman Marina, and we're hoping that that doesn't draw people down there. If people go down there on their own, then that's going to be just like every other day, they attend the park and the park is going to probably have to be the one enforcing that. And I think Chief Stoco can kinda, or Karen, I know they had some guidelines given to them that, on wording that would cover us on that, Chief.
Well, what I can tell you is, is I don't want to be the one to have to try and force a group of people going down there and congregating. So what I would suggest you do, the guidance that I have heard is if you're having no event, you're not hosting an event. If people get together, that's on them. The sponsor, since you're not sponsoring, nobody can be held liable for having that event. But if you sponsor the event, you're responsible if you get a group of people in violation of the governor's order.
Right. And so does sponsoring our fireworks?
I, I would tell you that you're sponsoring an event that you're not inviting the public to. You're just letting them know you're having fireworks displayed. But you're encouraging them not to come to the marina, which is probably the best way to do that. And then you're not inviting them to the marina.
Okay. So.
Like, say local traffic only. I mean, could, could you set something up at the Y so that people could not go down into the park?
That would be, that would be up to the park. In their property, if they want to close it off, they can. That's up to them.
Camping down there, you know, people with boats in and out of the water, so.
Yeah. I, I would just say as long as nobody's inviting people down there to any events. If they congregate, it's on them. It's, it's not the, the event sponsors, it's not the Marina's issue. I don't want it to be my issue. I don't want to be the jerk of the, of the town by saying, hey, you can't come down here. So it, it just definitely needs to be thought out in advance and, and there have been discussions, so. I, I think for the most part, people understand. We just need to make sure we advertise that we're not inviting anybody to the park.
Yeah. And that's what we've been trying to say in the most political way, without saying you're not welcome down there at the park, so. It's, we've, in our, in our flyers, we've stated no events or activities or vendors will be happening at the Boardman Marina Park. So we're hoping that is, I think is going to cover us for that. And then when we just advertise it, we're going to just try to keep saying we're not, trying not to invite everybody down. We're just providing this show that you can see from home. Did that answer that, Sandy?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Tori.
Okay, any other questions, guys? Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Alright, let's move on then. We're going to move into our action items. The resolutions, the first resolution is Resolution Dash, or 9-2020, the budget resolution. I need a motion, please.
Turning the page to get there.
I can do it, Art. I moved the approval of the budget resolution 9-2020.
Seconds.
It's been moved by David and seconded by Art to approve Resolution 9-2020, the budget 2020-2020. Any questions? Can I have a roll call, please? David?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Sandy? Yes. Motion passes, six and one absent. Next is Resolution 10-2020, to appoint the custodial officer.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 10-2020, appoint custodial officer.
It's been moved by Brandon and seconded by JR to approve the Resolution 10-2020, a resolution appointing Morro County Treasurer as custodial officer. Can I have a roll call, please? David?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Motion passes, six and one absent. Next is Resolution 11-2020, the state shared revenue. Motion please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by David and seconded by Art to approve Resolution 11-2020, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Any questions? Roll call, please. David?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Yes.
Sandy? Yes. Motion passes, six and one absent. The next resolution is 12-2020, workmen, workers comp for volunteers.
I move to approve. In 12-2020, a resolution extending the city of Boardman's worker compensation coverage to volunteers to the city of Boardman.
It's been moved by Junior. Do I have a second?
Second.
Gotta love this Zoom. It's been moved by Junior and seconded by Art to approve Resolution 12-2020, a resolution extending city of Boardman's workman compensation coverage to employ, to volunteers to the city of Boardman. Got any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, six and one absent. Moving right along. Next resolution is 13-2020, the contingency transfer. Do you have any questions? If not, I need a motion on the floor.
Move to approve.
Katie got the motion first. Go ahead and finish, Katie.
I move to approve Resolution 13-2020, contingency, contingency transfer.
Do you want to read the title for me, please, Katie?
Oh, man. Oh my goodness. All I have on my, my list is contingency transfer.
Okay, it's, it's alright.
Sorry.
Brandon, did you want to second that?
Yeah, second.
It's been moved by Katie and seconded by Brandon to move, approve Resolution 13-2020, a budget resolution to decrease contingency and to increase 2019-20 expenditures for materials and services. Do I have any questions? Can I have a roll call, please? David?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Sandy? Yes. Motion passes, six and one absent. Next is Resolution 14-2020, the addendum to agreement for long-term enterprise zone abatement. Any questions in regards to this? Say none, I need a motion on the floor.
So move for approval.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Art and seconded by Junior to approve Resolution 14-2020, the first addendum to the agreement for long-term rural enterprise zone abatement. Questions? Roll call, please. David?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Sandy? Yes. Motion passes, six and one absent. Next is Resolution 16-2020, the safe routes to school on Columbia Avenue. Been moved by Junior. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
And it's been seconded by Katie to approve Resolution 16-2020, a resolution for safe routes to school on northeast Columbia Avenue for a multi-use path. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, six and one absent. Next is Resolution 17-2020, for safe routes to school from Bella Vista to Wilson Road. Motion please.
Move to approve. For safe routes to schools from, from Columbia Road, Columbia Avenue.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Art and seconded by David to approve Resolution 17-2020, a resolution for safe routes to schools from Bella Vista Estates to Wilson Road for a multi-use path. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, six and one absent.
Mayor, who seconded?
What? David did. David did. Alright, do we have any other business? No other business?
Sandy?
Yes?
Sorry. So I have this lady that is offering, she has a friend who has a bunch of furniture that she is unpacking and I'm just sharing it with this group so I can find somebody. And she has dining room table, couches, loveseats, chairs, tons of cookware and stuff like that. She wants to donate to somebody that was affected by the storms. But the problem is, is that we need to find somewhere until they have a home to put it into. So I didn't know if anybody had some ideas where we could store this stuff to donate to these families.
I don't have any ideas. Does anybody else?
So.
Tori, Tori, if you, this is Chief, if you can get with me, maybe after these D A meeting, maybe we can come up with something. We, depending on how much it is, we might be able to hold it temporarily.
Okay.
I was thinking, do we have any room where that we store the Christmas decorations?
I was gonna say, does it look like Christmas?
I think that, that's going to be kind of hard to get in there, but we have a place we can put it for a temporary basis.
Yeah, and Marcy said that she would, they would love to have it and utilize it. They just got, these people don't have a home at this point in time to put it into. So as soon as they get a home, then they could have this furniture, so. So perfect. I'll get with you then. Thank you.
Thanks, Tori. Anything else? Okay, so the document signatures, is there going to be somebody coming around each of us? Okay, I see Heather shaking her head. Okay. Is that going to be tomorrow? Heather, is that going to be tomorrow? Okay. I've got a nice big pack. Yay. Okay, do, let's do the police report.
So everybody should have the police report for the month of May. And again, I, these numbers are a lot more accurate based on the fact that I got Bush back in the office. And, and so hopefully all the information you see on there is accurate. Are there any questions about this report? Okay, also I give you a real quick update. As of Friday, Fire Chief Hughes and myself turned the command post from Wilson Road Trail Park back over to the Red Cross. Red Cross called me on Monday, said that they are done with their portion. They're turning everything over to CAPCO for the remaining folks that are unplaced. Hopefully they'll have some avenues of trying to get some housing. I know that several people have stepped up and trying to come up with a way to help them out, whether it would be with legal services or help them out, whether it would be with legal services or the human development corporation on different avenues of first month, last month, rent, that type of thing. So there, there's a lot of work going on for those folks still. I'm still receiving phone calls. I received a call from a lady in Tri-Cities today that was offering stuff to try to help blankets and clothing and whatever was needed. And unfortunately, in this time, it's really tough for, well, the Red Cross cannot take unsolicited donations because of the, the risk of COVID. So she thought it might be a better option to send money to the bank account that's been set up for these folks. So it was really nice to see that somebody from out of the area wanted to step up. But as, as a whole, the community, I, I tell you, it's, it's, it's a real impressive to live here when you've got a community that steps up like this. As I said in our emergency meeting, people came out of woodwork and it, it just simply didn't matter what was going on. Even during the middle of the storm, there are people out helping people. So I'm extremely happy to live where I do. There isn't much more I could add on that. But the good news is, we happen to have the graduation parade the same day as the event. And it went really well. We had a very good turnout. We, we, we got a fairly decent route through town. It's kind of hard to hit everywhere that they wanted to go, but I think that graduation went really well. And I'm excited for the 2020 seniors that are stepping into their next phase of their life. And we congratulate them. Mr. Hammond, we, we were trying to do a, a parade with the teachers, but we couldn't quite come to a a real good route that worked for everybody, plus we were trying to mitigate the storm and the effects of. So, Mr. Hammond, did you want to touch any at all on your parade?
No, I really, I thought it went good. It was well received. I did hear one complaint that it, we were a little loud and they were trying to sleep. But other than that, it was fun. It was a good way to end.
Good. So I'm glad it went off without a hitch. We weren't able to, to provide as much assistance as we were wanting to, but they were able to make it happen. And, and I think it worked out really well. And the last thing that I can think of that I'll pass on, as you're aware, there was a peaceful protest in Boardman recently, I believe it was on Friday. They had a fairly, I'm, I'm gonna say they probably had thirty, forty people there. I'm guessing most of those were local folks. It was peaceful, didn't turn into be a problem. And when they were done, I didn't hear any complaints. I didn't hear anybody say one thing or another, unlike most of the, the nation. It went really well here, so that's about all I have unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Karen, wait, do we have any committee reports? Okay, oh Karen, you're next.
He's getting out her book.
Did y'all get the book? I sort of got it at closing time today and rather than go through all this, but I had the chance to kind of think some process through here. I do want to say that on the League of Oregon Cities, there's a forum in here that they would like for us to pick four items that they would like for us to talk on the when the legislature meets. So if you would look at that, and we don't have to have it until August, so next meeting I'll put it back on the agenda. And so do some thinking about what you think that the legislature should try to tackle this next time. You know, I, the, the League of Oregon Cities attorney stopped by on Monday to see me. And I learned something that I hadn't thought about before. But she was saying to me that a lot of the smaller towns on the coast do not have a tax district. They only, they get all of their money from lodging taxes. Because like in, when we started this Measure Five and Fifty, they had always gotten their money from five, I mean, from the tourists going through. And so they didn't think they needed a tax from the taxing district. But this year, they are really in dire straits out there because, you know, they've just been shut down so long that it just puts a new perspective on, you know, I just, I know you're getting sick of this, but I can't tell you how lucky you are to live in Boardman, Oregon. That, you know, when you look at these other places that are just really, really suffering money-wise. And they're saying the coast is going to be really affected this year. So that's the good news. That's how happy you should be to live in Boardman. We are putting out the bid to do the chip ceiling and a little small paving down there on Columbia Center or Avenue. And we'll, the bid closes on the twenty-fifth of June, so. And like you can see in my report, you can see how happy I am about the block grant that goes with the minor head start because they think that they're going to have to have another extension. So.
Did they say why they're gonna have to have another extension, Karen?
Yeah. Well.
I mean.
If the thing inefficiency is the key word to this project, it's gotta be that.
Okay.
It's just, I can't tell you, they have got to get on the ball and get a purchase order written and get some moderners ordered, or everybody is gonna pull their funding, which
Yep.
seems to me like, you know, I mean, how many years can you work on a project that we have more interest than they do?
Exactly.
So, but other than that, I, and you had, there's quite a lot of, I did want you to notice how many buildings, I included those, like the building permits that we had done in April and May. We had seventy-five because I was showing that the building department hasn't slowed down at all. It's just gangbusters here all the time. But I was really happy that in April, we had two new home constructions in Boardman. And in May, we had three that they had come in and bought the permits for. And I think all five of those are test to me, so.
I think they are due.
Them closing down the construction in Washington for a few, for a month or so really helped us here in Boardman. But these are nice figures to be having. And I included the paper about, because we're, we're having to make kind of a big decision about the splash pad because of not being able to control how many people. So I put the, the recommendations from our insurance company about that. And I think we'll take a hard look at this, but it's, it's gonna be hard to keep things disinfected and control the crowd and stuff because.
But is it water?
Well, it is, you know, you know, we, we use city water, so that's great. That, but it's the amount of people that congregate there and the dogs that run through and I don't know, because the, the rec center is gonna try to open and they have a lot better control. There will be no basketball. I mean, you can go in and one or two of you can shoot hoops, but here, there will be no basketball. There'll be no climbing wall this year. But we're gonna try to get the swimming pool open for certain amount of time. So things are starting to get a little bit better, maybe.
You saw the city penalty closed their pool for the year.
Yeah, they said they weren't gonna make enough money. And I see that, because we want to offer, the park, we want to offer swimming lessons too here, you know, like right away, because that's something we can kind of control. You can tell people mark spots off on the edge of the pool, so you're far enough apart. And then limit the class size or something, but so that some of these kids get swimming lessons. And we're gonna really try hard to offer some summer rep program. And they're looking at doing it at the city park, if we get the trees cleaned up, and maybe one of the grade schools, if we get permission. That because what happens there, what the rule is there is ten kids start in a group. And that ten kids stay in that group for the length of the session. And I think we are thinking two weeks maybe session. Anyway, and so if one of those kids gets sick or goes on vacation, you don't get to replace him with another child. You just, you start with ten, and if by the end of the program, you're down to three, that's what you're down to because we won't bus this year. So we're trying to think of places to have it that we can accommodate the children walking, so. I think other than that, you can read my notes and see the attachments that I included, it shows our, that our election was true and valid, so. I think everything else is working. We, we, like I said, we built a barrier. I don't know, I don't know, is barrier the right word for something that you stand on one side of and talk to somebody else on the other side? It's made out of flexible, but anyway, we made one of those for the counter here in the front. But I'm, we're, I'm like to wait to open the doors for a while yet till we see if all this extra opening up is going to increase our uptick in that COVID. So I think that's all.
Good question. On the recycle bins, what is the access and egress for vehicles there? Is it the same as going into the city garden?
Yes, yes.
So same in and out?
Yes, and it's, I think if you probably won't have as big a turnaround as you do over there now. Yeah.
It's pretty tight over there now with the construction, but.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Where is the recycle bins gonna be moved to again?
We're gonna move them over by the community garden.
Okay, that's what I thought.
We, there's, the granite has put a big pile of gravel there just in the last day or two, so.
Okay.
They were grading it today.
Oh, when they did?
Yeah, the grader was there today. It's pretty flat.
Good. So now, don't forget, we, we will have a meeting next Tuesday night and it will be at six. And it shouldn't be too long. It's, you know, just we'll pass the resolution to move forward with the enterprise zone. And I think that's all I have tonight.
Anybody have any other questions for Karen? All right, thank you, Karen. Any counselors have anything? Awful quiet.
It's bedtime.
All right, so, um, I have something I wanted to thank to Stoco and for all the hard work that his emergency task force did the night of the windstorm and the police department for their support. Um, you guys did an immaculate job. All the volunteers that stepped up and helped, just, I love this community. I mean, I just love it here, so I just wanted to say thank you. That's all I have.
Seconded, I second that.
There's nothing else. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to adjourn, but I think we have to stay open for five more minutes for the public hearing for the enterprise zone. So nobody go away yet.
Hey, I do have something to share. Um, Boardman Food Pantry is gonna be having a meeting tomorrow night at the First Baptist Church at seven P M. And also, we are still looking for a location to house the Boardman Food Pantry because we cannot find a location. And the First Baptist Church is gonna be opening their doors to the public soon, and we're going to have to vacate that location. So I'm just reaching out there again for any leads on a location.
Did the person on Galaxy Note have something to say? Okay. Hey, Tori, maybe we just need to have a fundraiser to build a new building for the food pantry.
I think it's looking like we're gonna have to probably build something.
Yeah.
That might be a great idea.
Yeah. I don't, you know, I think the senior center was asked, but it's just not big enough.
No. Next question is, where can we build one?
I don't know. Good question.
That's where I come in.
All right, got any genius ideas?
Not, not off the top of my head, just let me know what kind of square footage you're talking about, so I can start looking.
I've had conversations of just a very simple pole barn structure, insulated, just something. I don't know, I don't know what size, but we're not talking big by any means. We're just talking functional.
Okay, let me start thinking about it. I need to catch up with you too, Tori, on, on the sign location at Columbia and, and Main Street.
Okay, sounds good.
We kind of had to move it a little bit in order to be able to avoid all the underground stuff and the overhead stuff.
I heard, I heard there was, the locate wasn't very accurate locate. I heard, I heard there was, the locate wasn't very accurate, locate.
Okay, it is now eight o'clock. We're going to go, is there any other public comments in regards to the taxing district that we're trying to form the enterprise zone? Do we need to have any further discussions tonight? Karen, did you have anything you wanted to add tonight?
Oh, I, I just appreciate y'all turning out.
All right. And then our next meeting would be next, the 19th, correct? Or the 16th?
16th.
16th. Okay.
All right.
I'll just call the meeting to adjourn then. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye.